And Chair of this Subcommittee this evening. Which has been convened to consider an application for street trading consent variation for Grilla at Campbell Park. Please note that this meeting will be recorded for broadcast on the internet after the meeting has taken place and can be viewed online at the council's YouTube website. Generally, the public gallery is not filmed, but by entering the meeting room and using the public seating area, you are consenting to being filmed. All recordings will be undertaken in accordance with council's standing orders. Recording of this meeting will be retained for a period of six months for the purpose of webcasting and preparing the minutes of the meeting. Before we begin, I will ask the Subcommittee members to introduce themselves. When I call you, please give your name and a role on the Subcommittee. And at the same time, if you do have any declarations of interest, please take the opportunity to declare them now. councillor Bailey.
councillor Tracy Bailey, member of this committee, knowing just.
councillor Petchy.
Martin Petchy, substituting for, probably for Frank Cash, but certainly for somebody.
Thank you. I'll now ask officers to introduce themselves. James.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name's James Sloan. I'm the principal licensing officer.
Ophius.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ophius. I'm the principal lawyer to the licensing committee.
Jane.
Good evening, Jane Croix, Democratic Service Officer.
Thank you. I will now ask the other parties to introduce themselves. Mr Mohammed Uwaz as the applicant.
I'm Mohammed Delian, I'm the applicant.
I understand we also have objectors and supporters of the application this evening. I will ask you to introduce yourselves at the relevant time. I've already dealt with matters one and three of the agenda, so moving to item two, apologies for absence, please, Jane.
Thank you, Chair. Apologies received from councillor Nay and councillor Petchy as nominated substitute.
Thank you. Item four is the regulatory Subcommittee procedure. So just to outline what it is, the licensing officer will present the relevant details, but make no recommendation regarding the decision on the application to the Subcommittee. Together with information regarding any details relevant to the application which may have come to light since the report was written. The applicant or his representative can present their case, including calling any witnesses. Questions may then be put to the applicant through and with the consent of the Chair by other parties and the Subcommittee members. The other parties will present their case, but only where representations are unresolved. Questions may then be put to those persons through and with the consent of the Chair and the Subcommittee. A reminder, when cases are presented, please bear in mind that the members of Subcommittee have read the papers and submissions, so you do not need to repeat everything you submitted in writing. Questions are to clarify points made and not an opportunity to cross-examine or rebut statements made by other parties. I will then invite summing up, replicating the order of speaking from when cases were presented. The members of Subcommittee will then adjourn to deliberate and come to a decision. Only the legal adviser and clerk will remain with the Subcommittee. You will be informed orally of the decision by the Subcommittee, along with any conditions and the reasons for those conditions. A written decision notice will be sent to the applicant as soon as possible thereafter. We therefore move on to item five, the objection against a street trading consent variation for Grilla at Campbell Park. I'd like to invite the licensing office to start.
Thanks councillor McLean. So this evening, members, you are considering a variation, application to a current street trading consent. If granted, the current provision of street trading from 5pm till 8pm will be increased from a start time of 3pm to a finish time of 10pm during the week and 10.30 on weekends. Members will note that in Milton Keynes, first-time applicants, they are permitted to only apply for three hours to begin with, and this is to allow the trader to get used to that premise, that location, but also for local residents, responsible authorities to see whether this is indeed a suitable location for that particular street trader. So once the trader has traded for three hours, and they've done so for at least 21 days, they can then apply for the variation, which is what you have in front of you this evening. So the trader's current consent was granted on the 7th of June this year. There's been no complaints against the trader. However, this department has received correspondence from the town council in the past and also from councillor Trendle, representing his constituents and raising basically concern about the location of the trader. This application has received no representations from responsible authorities. We do have two representations, as you're aware, one from councillor Trendle, obviously representing his constituents, and also from a local business who operates the Budgens, which is in immediate vicinity. And I don't think that objector has attended. The representations, they refer to concerns, including the fact that it occupies two parking spaces currently, and its proximity to local residents, and it is very close. It's about 15 to 20 metres away from the flats in the area. And thus, that proximity could lead to noise complaints, it could lead to odour complaints. The local business also refers to the use of the parking spaces, but then also the potential impact on their business from this application. It would have been good to be able to quiz the local business a bit more about how they are directly affected, but they haven't arrived. And although, as I've said, I've not received, or we've not received complaints from local residents, it'd be very useful to hear from councillor Trendle about the sort of comments that he's received from his constituents. The policy does allow for members to consider the impact of a street trading business on local similar businesses, and there are relevant sections in our policy. The parking element is a little bit unusual because there is a parking restriction currently, and so someone is only allowed to park there for a maximum of 30 minutes during a couple of time periods during the day. However, I can confirm that our parking team has given a dispensation really for the applicant to use that parking location, and they can remain there whilst they're trading and leave their vehicle there overnight. And my other observation is that the trader does have quite a large bin located adjacent to the trading location. This is probably unique in Milton Keynes, and traders do need to have some sort of commercial waste solution. I'd say most traders will take their waste away at the end of the night and dispose of it using a waste, a commercial waste contract will take it to the tip in Newport Pagnell. And I think there's probably a better solution than having this huge bin. I think the applicant might have some solutions that he wants to bring up tonight, but there's nothing, I would say, that prevents them from using the bin in this way, but there might be a more sensible solution, to be honest. I failed to mention in my report, my recommendation, and so I'll let you know now councillors. So I would say, members, of course, you will need to consider the representations that we have in front of us. However, for me, as the licensing authority, hasn't received any complaints for the four months of trading, and there's been no breach of policy or anything along those lines, then my recommendation can only be that of grant. That's the end of my report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for the officer? Martin or Tracy? Tracy?
Sorry, is there any indication from the town council, the nature of complaints, the number of complaints that were received?
And so, post-granting of the original application back in June, I had some correspondence with the clerks of the council, said that there were some concerns, and I think possibly mainly in relation to parking, but they haven't taken this opportunity to object for this variation. And no, they didn't provide me any details, although we obviously consulted the town council, community council, but yeah, they didn't come back to us.
Martin, any questions, stage? I got one, or more than one. The original application as granted from 5 till 8, were there any objections to that before it was granted?
No, Chair, that was granted under delegated authority. In effect, there was no objections, so it was granted as applied.
So the local business that's now objecting, didn't object to the original granting of the licence?
That's correct, councillor McLean.
On the parking. Are you aware what the basis of the dispensation is on the grounds of, I've not heard of an officer being able to say that parking spaces could be used not in accordance with the rules applying at that point? And also, there's an error in there. It says it's 3 till 8 on page 31, not 3 till 10.
In respect of parking, Chair, I will defer to the parking team. They've said that it's fine, or they've given permission for the trader to trade there. As I think I said in the opening, it's quite unusual, but I will defer to parking. They're in charge of it, it's their legislation, and they've opted to provide permission.
Okay. And also, in the papers that were prepared, the censors, the licences actually dated the 11th of September. Is that because it was printed on the 11th, presumably printed on the 11th of September, page 11?
Chair, I will have a look, but I would imagine that it was an auto date, but I will check, Chair.
But we're satisfied it was granted on the 7th of June, or 6th of June this year, 7th and go forward 365 days to 6. Okay, that's all my questions, thank you. We'll now move on to the applicant. If you'd like to make your submission, just to reiterate, we've read everything in the papers and that you supplied it in addition, so just bring the very salient points to us, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much to the licensing team and the regularity committee members for giving me this opportunity to respond to the objection I have received regarding the street trading time extension application. Before responding to the objection, I would like to briefly introduce myself and my business. Since migrating to the UK as a student, two and a half years ago, I have worked hard to complete my MBA in management. My passion has always been to start a business, contribute to the UK economy and support the growth of local community. I don't have any external support. I proactively approached to the government's business support team through the email. They advised me to seek a guidance regarding the street trading from the area council. Following that, I have reached out to the Milton Keynes licensing team before six, eight months ago, had an initial call with Rohan Paris and Ed Fisher, the licensing officer and the enforcement licensing officer, who guided me very well on how to establish and run my business. I have invested all of my personal savings and dedicated over eight months to develop this startup. Throughout this time, I have fully complied with all advice, guidance and procedures provided by the council. Now, I would like to respond to the objection raised by Mr Sagundaraj, the convenience store owner. Mr Sagundaraj mentioned that I'm a competitor to his business. I would like to clarify to the committee that my business is not a direct competition with his business. My business is a hot food takeaway while he runs a convenience store. My business is registered with the company's house under SIC code 56103, takeaway food shops and mobile food stands, and it's also registered with the council as a hot food takeaway business. His business is registered under SIC code 47110, retail sale and non-specialised store with food and beverage or tobacco predominating. This shows that our primary purposes are different and therefore our target audience are also different. My trailer provide freshly prepared South Indian and Western meals, including parrot tasse, biryani, kuthu wrap, burgers and fries. His store mainly sells groceries, snacks and packed food to go. They are totally different products and services. He operates 7am to till 10pm, while I'm applying to trade only 3pm to 10pm, a small portion of the day. Our business models and timing and the customers are totally different. I can confidently say I'm not a direct competitor to his business. For the parking site, it was mentioned that my trailer occupies a car park previously used by his customers. I would like to clarify to the committee that the parking spaces at Dalgine Place are for both public and the residents, and there are more than 40 spaces available on the left side on Dalgine Place. I occupy only one bay, which leaves plenty of spaces for other users during the trading hours, most of the bays remaining free, and residents generally use their own building parking facilities on Dalgine Place. So there is no shortage of spaces for anyone. Nearby streets such as Everie Boulevard and Albanian Place and Columbia Place also is a free parking, is available for the public. I have written permission from the parking team to use this space and leave the trailer overnight in the three months. I have been, in the last three months, I have been operating at this location. From the customers or the members of the public have experienced so far, no any issues with the parking. This clearly demonstrates that my presence does not negatively impact the parking availability or the surrounding area. Overheads and the financial commitments. Mr Sagundaraj, he mentioned it was, it's very stressful for him because of my business, because he mentioned my overhead is very low, but he's invested a huge amount. I would like to say to the council, my business is a smaller scale, my running costs are significant. I have invested heavily, including purchasing, fitting out the trailer, ensuring all compliance, licensing, safety and everything, because I'm a new trader. For small-scale business, this represents a very large financial and personal investment. It's not fair to compare my startup directly with a business that has been already established for over seven and a half years. And I would like to, I have received another objection from the honorable councillor, Mr Tredall. I would like to give a response to his objection as well. Councillor Tredall mentioned my use of parking spaces. I would like to say the same response I have already mentioned during Mr Sagundaraj's objection. Yeah, as the parking spaces in Dalgine Place in left side, there is more than 40 plus parking space for the public and the residents, it's not a...
You've already said that once, we don't need to hear it again, sir.
Yeah, and the second parking bay is, he mentioned I'm using for the bin. My bin is placed outside of the parking bay, and only two times in a month, the waste collection company is coming to take the bin. So if that is the issue, I can change the location. I already found the location on the same street. This is the location on Dalgine Place. We can, I can leave the bin over there, because this is how the residents also, they have leave the bin on the street. I had to take a picture during the time, so if you want, I would like to give to the committee members. And the close to the residential area, honorable councillor Tredall, he mentioned that my business is very close to the residents. I agree with that, but his concern that it's being close might cause noise or disturb for the people or the residents. So far, in over the three months of running my business, I have not disturbed any neighbours. The licensing policy does not specify the distance requirement between the trader. My purpose is not to disturb the residents, but help them by providing budget-friendly food. I would like to tell the committee members, and the objector, he mentioned my trading location is near to 15 metres for the residents, but there is another food bay in Fisher Mead. It's very close to the residents, it's 13 metres. This is the photograph.
We're not talking about Fisher Mead, so we're talking about your application.
Yeah, he's running the business more than 10 years without causing any noise incidents for the public, so if that business can run successfully, I can do the same, same as he ran already. So being close to residential area is not an issue, creating noise is the issue. So far, I'm operating very well without creating any problems to the neighbours. I would like to kindly request to the committee members to please consider this point and make a decision to approve my application. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, colleagues? Paul, I know you haven't actually spoken yet, not introduced yourself, so councillor Trendle is here as an objector, but you always have the right to ask questions of the applicant if you'd like to do that.
Thank you very much, Chair. So I'm councillor Paul Trendle, and one of the elected members for Campbell Park, now with the more that includes Campbell Park itself. So I've got a couple of questions here, and it's based upon things you've given representation to the licensing authority and things you've said here in these documents. And I thought I'd start with the parking bays that we've been talking about, those. So, and I accept that, you know, they're public spaces in this 40. It's about a thousand people live on Campbell Park though, so those 40 bays, if you're using two of them, it's 5%. So, you know, it's quite a big bit. So when two cars park next to you, your trailer takes up almost exactly one bay, it's a very tight fit, but it fits. When two cars park in the bays next to you, where do your customers stand when they're ordering and when they're waiting? Because they can't stand in front of your hatch, because there's a car parked right next to them.
Put the microphone on, please.
So far, I'm running the business last three months from the application granted to this time. So when I opened the trailer to start the trading, there is no any car parked so far. If anyone parks the car, they know they are normally leaving the car from that parking space, because on the left side, so far, I didn't face any issue for the parking. Most of the time, only 50 to 60 percentage of the parking spaces are using, because she also, one of the residents on Dalgine Place, so all the residents, they have own parking space on their building. So the residents, they normally, they are not leaving the car in outside, because they feel more secureable for the security purpose, so they're leaving the car parked. For if any public they are coming, they are not leaving the car next to my, you know, trailer, because they know there's a lot of spaces. If there is any, no spaces, then only they need to come and ask, can I park or something? So far, I didn't face any issues, because there are plenty of parking spaces on that street. And because for Budgens also, they have mentioned the parking in front of Budgens, Everie Boulevard also is a free parking space. Some customers, they park the car on that street, and next to the Albanian Place and Columbia Place also.
Not the answer to the question that he asked, you're giving more information. Follow-up questions?
Yeah, couple, Chair, thank you very much for that. So, yeah, all right. You mentioned hidden here about the trailer and your extractor fans, and how the way I saw the email you sent, objection to something I'd said, that the fans you've got filter out the smells and everything else, which is interesting. So could you explain to me then, what type of filter does your fan use whereby it filters out smells and not just particular? And part two of the question, if your fans are doing that and are taking away the cooking smells, how do they take away the smells when you open up the hatch that's width of the whole trailer and about three feet high?
So normally, our food are, most of the food are, you know, the pre-cooked food. So some, I mean, the raw material, we are not making anything from the trailer, so just heat up and give it to the customers for the same thing. So some food we are making at our resident home as well, so there is no any option to create the smell to the customers.
One last one for you then, for this section. Who at the city council gave you permission to put your 1100 litre Euro bin on top of council landscaping?
Actually, I don't know the system, because I already mentioned, I'm a new trader, I don't have any experience for the street trading or anything. I had an initial call with the licensing team, so they have advised me to go through and check the policy documents. So I have checked, we need a proper waste management. So I have checked Google, I'm doing the trading, street trading, I need a proper waste management. So I contacted one of the companies, so they gave me that bin for the waste management, because the compulsory is, I need to get the document of DOC, I forgot the name, there is certificates to keep we are managing the food waste correctly for the hygiene inspection. So that's the reason I got that, otherwise I don't know, because then only I have realised, most of the street traders, they don't have any that kind of bin. So hereafter, if I don't want that bin, I can, you know, then only I have, I know that, I can contact the Newport Pagnell Recycling Centre, so I can leave my wastage to that centre, I can leave, otherwise I found another place on the street. If you're allowed, I can leave my...
The question he asked is, who gave you permission to have the bin there? Not, you're giving, so no one's actually given you permission?
In that space?
Yeah, no, so...
No, there is no any plan, and I just, I don't have any permission. Actually, I don't know, I thought I can leave the trailer site.
Okay, thank you. That's the answer that we wanted a little earlier. Any more questions? Okay. Right, over to you, Paul, for your representations.
Thank you, Chair. I don't object to the food van, a food van there. I've sat where you guys are, as you well know, and I've given permission to lots of food vans, but I object to this one where it is and the hours you want to trade. You haven't had a lot of representations from residents. I discovered from talking to them that just by happy chance, or bad luck, depending on which side of the argument you are, your food trailer turned up about the time that Campbell Park was very busy with events, and everyone assumed it had something to do with one of those events, was parked up there either after one or ready for one. And by the time they realised it was obviously something a bit more permanent, at that stage, of course, you've already given it permission, so it became a feature. So what we're really talking about is the hours now. And the objection's simple, because longer hours mean more people, more vehicle movements, and when I look at your supporters who gave their addresses, 75% of them don't live in Campbell Park, and they're certainly not walking from Crown Hill, so they're coming by car, so more vehicles, and they'll come with more noise, vehicle noise, people noise, as they sit and chat and hang around while streaming for their food, and more cooking smells, because you'll be open longer, it gives you more chance to create them. It is close to people's houses, it's 15 metres. If you're not sure what 15 metres looks like anybody, I measured it earlier, it's from that wall there to the back of your seats. It's very close. It's not, it's half of 30 metres on Fisher Mead, 15 metres regardless of fact in Campbell Park, is still half of what it is on Fisher Mead. So it is very close indeed. So when we look at that, we are looking at a very, very short distance compared to most other places in Milton Keynes. Finally, I want to add as well, that there is nothing in Annex F, although the papers were, refers to it, which actually confirms there's permission for it to be there, and there's nothing there that agrees with the hours that the applicant is asking for. I accept that they might have been wrong when they're saying eight o'clock, they mean 10 o'clock, but in fact, one of the hours you want to close at is 10.30, that's not mentioned in Annex F at all. So that's very shabby on part of highways, if they've got it wrong, or if they've got it right, it's not what the gentleman's asking for, either way. I think we shouldn't compound this, people don't want it, we shouldn't compound it by letting it stay longer, and I understand that we can't say it can't stay at all, so let's not make it worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Paul? Tracy?
May I ask how many people have been in touch with you making complaints about this?
Spoken about five.
Martin?
No question.
Okay, have you any questions to ask Mr Trendle? It's a question, not a, no rebutting what he said. If you've got a question to clarify something, please ask it.
For the distance you have mentioned, I don't know why, what's the main reason you are objecting because of the close to the residential area? I think, I feel for the smell and the noise, right? So that's why I feel I have observed so many, you know, the kebab bin and other places.
You're making a statement, you could question what he said, not counter it, it's got to be a question at this stage.
Yeah, I don't know.
It depends on who you're talking to. Some people think it's just too close to have a food van or food trailer, and that comes down mainly to noise and activity outside, it's just too close to where they live. It is really close. I mean, it takes, I think it took me about three seconds to walk that distance, maybe four, because of getting older, but it is really close. Some people think it's too close because of the loss of parking that would be close to where they live or where they go and shop. And there's no point saying you can park further down. That street as well, you know, because I've been down there hundreds of times, I'm sure you have, most days, it's parked out fully, almost two-thirds of the way down, and it only is not parked out as you get to the very bottom of the hill. And by the way, when you do park down there, you've got to walk the way up to the shop as well. So those bays you've got there are premium bays, that's where shop customers want to park, so they think it's too close. If you've gone further down the hill, maybe they wouldn't have applied. I haven't got crystal ball, maybe they wouldn't have objected. I haven't got crystal ball, I don't know. But where you've got it there is not helpful. It's also a really tight turning point, and there's other people who say it's too close to their house, because it will generate rubbish, and that is one of the top littering hotspots in Campbell Park, right behind you. Not because of you at the moment, but right behind you, that's one of the top littering hotspots. Not because of you at the moment, but right behind you, that's one of the top littering hotspots. And they just foresee it will get worse because you'll have rapid and they'll have bags and et cetera, et cetera. So yeah, there's lots of reasons why fifteen metres is too close. But that reason depends on who's, who's giving it, because lots of people give lots of different reasons.
Thank you, Paul. Any other questions? I think the lady wants to ask a question.
How is it okay for like budgets to operate just under the building and have no noise whatsoever? Assuming it doesn't, which it actually does, while this guy's fifteen metres away and he's still making some noise? Because I've lived there for eight months, I moved to the city nine months ago, so I don't know him personally, just FYI. I'm just one of the customers. So how is that okay? That his shop's a problem, but theirs is not.
It's okay because no one's complained about budgets, frankly.
But how many supporters?
That's the way, that's the way, no, that's the way this process works. If you don't want something to be there, you complain about its hours or first of all, you would have complained about it being there at all. No one did, these guys gave you permission. Now they're complaining about extending the hours. They complained about gentleman here, no one complained about budgets is basically what it comes down to. But also if it wasn't budgets, it would be Tesco's or one shop, it's a shop.
Budgets is part of Tesco's, to be honest.
No, sorry.
This is not, it's not a ding dong across.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, so if you've got a question, and before you do that, can you identify yourself? We don't know who you are.
My name's Ishan Berry, I'm one of the supporters, you must have my email.
Okay, so have you any other questions about what Paul said?
Yeah, I was just following that up, I was just asking.
What, so what?
Yeah, my question was just in regards with, maybe like you've mentioned previously about complaints. Like there were five people complaining, could you share with me how many people I have supported in the emails? How many number do you have?
I don't have to, no one has contacted me to support it.
I dropped an email, that's why.
You're not, you didn't.
But
That's, you've asked a question, you've got the answer. Have you any other questions?
No, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Right, now we now move on to sum me up, but before I, I do that, can I ask the applicant, you've asked for the variance to be three till, three till twenty two hundred on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Fifteen hundred to twenty two thirty on Friday, Saturday and Sunday and closed on Monday. Yep. So you realise that, did you open, have you, did you open on the August bank holidays? Would you like to open on bank holiday Mondays?
So after I have submitted, after I have submitted my application, I had a call with the licensing officer. So then she advised me to, we can't open the shop like ten thirty or nine thirty, thirty minutes. So then I have asked her to open seven days and like three to ten, not ten thirty.
I missed, have I missed something, James? I don't remember seeing the change. And certainly for Mondays.
And so Chair, the application is as, as it is on page seventeen. And that, as you described the hours, Chair, so in effect it would be closed. And so this is what we've, on a Monday, so we've consulted on these hours, which is three o'clock till ten o'clock. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, three o'clock until ten thirty, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And so if there has been some discussions, we can't change an application whilst, whilst this being set.
That's what I'm just making, so you cannot open on bank holiday Mondays?
No, that's why, after I have submitted the application, seven days and three to ten, not ten thirty.
Well, we, okay.
Bank holidays also, I'm planning to open.
No, well, you can't on a bank holiday Monday because you haven't applied for Mondays.
That's why I'm mentioning, sir, after I have submitted the application to the council.
Can the lady switch your microphone off, please?
I have submitted the application after a few days, two, two, three days later. And I made the payment, then I got the call from the Rohan Paris for the licensing enforcement officer. She advised, she told me you can't open like ten thirty or nine thirty, you need to be the whole hours.
Only worried about bank holiday Mondays, you've
Yeah, I'm, I'm planning to open.
James, I'm, I'm very confused. I'm, I believe what we have to decide is what's been in the papers, not what has been mentioned by the applicant.
So I think, I think I've got to the bottom of it. And so I think there's a discussion whether someone can apply for half, like up until ten thirty, or it should be a whole hour. So to finish at ten or eleven o'clock.
I'm not worried about that, it's only Mondays.
Yes, Chair, I'll just get around to that. So I think that's perhaps what the applicant's talking about. In respect of this application, you have not asked to open on Mondays, the applicant has not asked to open on Mondays. And so if it's granted, it will be to the hours that are listed on page seventeen, eighteen. And, and so you would not be permitted to trade on a Monday. If in the future you want to, then there's obviously the option for another variation application.
Just wanted to make that clear that you understand that, that you can't open on bank holiday Mondays until you might make another application that's granted.
Yeah, but after, you know, I had a call with the team, so the representation, the consultation.
Excuse me, we are going with what's in the papers that you've seen.
Okay.
So it's just making sure that, because if you were to open on Monday and someone came along and saw you, you'd be in breach of your licence.
So then you can go ahead with the, already I have applied, that's it.
Right, you now have a chance to summarise before we make, we leave to make a decision.
If you allow me to trade on, during the bank holidays on Monday, I'm willing to do the trading, otherwise there is no any issue for me.
You haven't applied for Mondays, but this is all we can decide what's here in front of us, not what you might want to do in the future. Okay, is there anything else you want to say as a summary? But remember, we've listened to you and read your submissions.
That's it, no, no, nothing from my side.
Paul?
Formerly Chair.
James, anything to add to at the end of this?
Sum up, is that right? Yeah, so just to sum up, I would still recommend a grant of application as applied for in the papers. And it would have been very useful to hear from the local business who made representation, just to get a bit more information about issues with competition. And I would just, in your deliberations, you might want to look at section two point one and two point six of the street trading policy as it stands at the moment. It is, there is reference to protection of obviously local residents and businesses. But then if you were to look at section six point one, it does ask the committee to consider the number and type of similar businesses in the location. And I think the spirit of the policy there is more to look at. To take an example, preventing a fish and chip van rocking up outside a fish and chip shop or to have a concentration of street traders selling the same things in a particular area. But the wording is not fantastic in our policy, but that's what I think the, the spirit of the, the policy is looking at. And it's very useful to hear from Counselor Trendle, obviously. I haven't received any other representations or complaints from local residents, which is why I recommend the grant. If you do decide to grant the application, I really do think you should think about conditions in respect to the bin. We don't, as licensing authority, determine where they can put a bin or who even gives permission, it's probably highways. They are a consultancy, we didn't have anything back from them. But it does seem to be a very unique circumstance to have a big old bin outside your street trading van, whereas you could have a small one and deal with your waste in a more appropriate way perhaps. And that's the end of my summary, thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, we now, the subcommittee with our clerk and legal advisor will leave the room and we will make our deliberation and return it as soon as possible. Decisions. We obviously listened very carefully to what both the applicant and Counselor Trendle said. And particularly we noted there'd been no objections from residents either for the original application or the current application. So we are going to grant the licence as applied for with the change that it will only be till twenty two hundred on Thursday or Friday, Saturday and Sunday. So three, three PM till ten PM, four, six trading days. But also within one month, you, we want you to implement an alternative waste removal system. I probably portable bins with sacks and those should be removed each night. And that's a larger BIFR bin should not be used after one month. That's our decision. So thank you everyone for your attendance and enjoy the rest of your evening.